Mr. Chairman, please, stand with me, please. I will lead the prayer and Steve would you lead the pledge. Stand with me, please. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day, the beauty of this day, the beauty of the season, Heavenly Father, and the beauty of the county we live in. And we pray, Heavenly Father, that what we do and say here today will be in harmony with that will and will be fair to all concerned. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're seated.
Hold on, yes ma'am.
Rhonda Allen, Richie Bowlen, Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Gary Farley.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Alan Swader.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Luann Zelnick. Craig Lynch.
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Nothing withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir, no.
Waiver request, James Patterson waivers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This first waiver request is, as you said, James Patterson subdivision by Mr. Dayton Griffin. This property is located along Rocky Hill Road. The existing parcel is a little over ten acres in size. The applicant's proposing to build a house on the property and there's a reduced copy of the plat that's been included with your agenda material. It's on the third page, I guess, of the, of that particular comments section. While this property is over five acres and therefore normally doesn't require a plat, the fact that it's on a private easement does require it to be platted, which is why you're seeing this. The owners of the property have submitted documentation that shows only one of his, one other track in addition to his has access, so he's not asking for any kind of an easement access as far as more tracks accessing easement than are permitted, so it's just gonna be his track and one other. The only reason he's asking for a waiver is because of the location of the existing fire hydrant. Information provided by Consolidated Utility indicates that the line in that area cannot support a fire hydrant and the closest hydrant's about seventeen, eighteen hundred feet away. Again, this is just for a single-family residence and he is asking for this waiver. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Dayton, Mr. Griffin is present to answer any questions as well.
I guess it's just for a family member?
I think it's actually for himself, as I understand it. Is it?
Right.
Yeah.
But if it had frontage, he'd be able to do this anyway with having over five acres.
If he had over five, yes, he could over five acres, that's right.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, then a second. All of us, a motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. William Underwood waivers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This one and the next, the circumstances behind both are pretty similar, so I'll go ahead and explain the one and the next, the next item, I won't go into as much detail. This property is located along Morgan Road. The existing parcel is about, just a little over an acre in size. The applicant is proposing to do a re-subdivision of his property. Of course, we have included a survey of the properties as well in your materials for your review. This particular application, what he's wanting to do, there's two existing houses on the subject's property. He's wanting to square up his existing properties, you can see on the attached plat by transferring about two-thirds of an acre of the property to the adjacent track, which is owned by Mr. Hibden, while at the same time transferring that same amount of acreage from the Hibden track to his property. You can see the way that the property is kinda laid out, it's kinda awkward, so really what he's wanting to do is just kinda transfer, do a land swap, if you will. Since this property is less than five acres, staff instructed the applicant to have a plat drawn up to do this transfer. While staff is comfortable with the plat, the problem he's running into involves the location of the soils on the property. Officials from the State Department of Groundwater Protection have stated they cannot sign off on this plat unless the soils areas are shown. However, at the same time, they have indicated that this does not meet their definition and wouldn't qualify as a subdivision under their guidelines, so they're feeling that their signature really isn't required for this. Unfortunately, we don't really have any kind of regulations in place that actually allows the omission of a signature block, so that's the reason you're at, we're asking, or the applicant is asking for these waivers, we instructed them to do that. We're also in the process of developing some guidelines for re-subdivision plats. We have sections in our subdivision regulations for minor plats, combinations, major plats, but nothing for just a re-subdivision like this, and so we're gonna be coming up with that and probably bringing those for your review at the next day meeting in October. So really, what he's asking for is just a waiver of those two provisions, just so that the groundwater folks don't have to sign off on the plat. In addition, this property is over a thousand feet from a fire hydrant, even though there is existing house on the property, it's not for redevelopment, since he's going through the plating process under the regulations we have now, that is one of the requirements, so they are asking for the waiver to that as well. So I hope that was kinda clear, but if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So basically, you're, you don't have a problem with this happening this way?
No. Like I, like I said, if it wasn't for the fact that it's required on our regulations, we don't have a section that just deals strictly with re-subdivision plats, that's what we're gonna bring to your, for your review next month. Something that deals with that, so we don't have to see these kind of situations where groundwater doesn't need to sign off on them, so.
Mr. Chairman, they're not, excuse me.
Well, go ahead.
They're not changing anything that doesn't exist right now.
That's correct.
They're just cleaning up some property lines.
That is correct.
And improve probably the value and the appearance of both of those properties.
And I would think the usability as well, 'cause that track, the way it is laid out right now, you just really can't do anything with some of that land through there, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve? All of us, a motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Larry McMahon, that's for all three young men, yes?
Yes, it's, the situation for this one, this is a piece of property located along Crainer Road, it's again, a little over an acre in size. He's proposing to just add an additional acre to his property from the adjacent track to the east. Again, we have included a copy of the proposed plat for your review. The situation on this is identical to the one we just explained, same type situation. So if you have any other questions, I'll be more happy to answer them.
Motion to approve, have a second.
Second.
Steve, second. All of us, a motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, plat and bond extension, Livingston bond extension, one year.
Both of these subdivisions, what they're asking for is just, just a simple bond extension. They're both in good shape, drainage is working, they're just, because of slogan and housing sales, they're just, they'll wait a little while longer.
Okay, okay, we're looking at Livingston and Wyndham Cove bond extension, same town.
Where, where are these subdivisions at?
Livingston's down on Leana Road, my district.
Wyndham Cove is...
Nice development, they've done a good job with it.
But Wyndham Cove is around the road from there, too.
Yeah. That's right, it's over on Allen, that's right, yeah.
Got a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All of us, a motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Motion to approve. Final approval, Valley View, Section Three, minor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We have two minor plats for your consideration today, both of them being three lots in size. The first one is for the Valley View Section Three subdivision. As you can see from the plat, basically what they're doing is the original plat that was submitted and approved for this, actually where the road is curving, you can kinda see, it was a kind of a dotted dash line, it was a bulb out right there, what they call it, I think called an eyebrow. Because of the topography of the area, they were having some concerns and some issues with the driveways in that area, so basically what they're doing is they're just eliminating the eyebrow and just making it a curve. Staff doesn't really have any problems with any of that and, you know, as far as the plat is concerned, it appears to be in good order. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Jamie Reed from SEC is here, I believe I explained that correctly.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, have a second.
Second.
All of us, a motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Green Hills, minor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Green Hill subdivision, what you're seeing here is this was a situation located off of Highway ninety-nine in Graham Way. Basically, it was two lots, they're making a third lot out of it, which is why it's a situation where we can't approve it administratively, has to be brought to your, for your approval. Again, as far as the plat's concerned, we sent our comments out, they've addressed the comments that we had, and it appears to be in good order.
Okay. Questions?
These are on conventional sewage, or septic.
No, yeah, septic tank, yes.
Got a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
All of us, a motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Site plan review, Coy Young.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We have three site plans for your review today. The first is the application by Mr. Coy Young. The first sheet that you see, there's actually existing conditions, the site plan's actually on the, the second page, the full site plan. You'll recall that this was brought to the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners within the last few months. This is for a feed and tax store. The applicant has submitted the plan and we have done our review. There were a number of comments that needed to be addressed on this. Those comments have been addressed and if there's no questions, we feel it's in good order.
Okay. Questions?
Are we requiring the trees on the backside of the building, 'cause, or is that just in their drawing, or is that a requirement?
That would be a requirement, we anticipate that they'll probably come back with a subdivision plat to make this its own lot, and that being the case, it would require landscaping back in there, so.
Since that's his property behind it.
Right.
He'd have to buffer himself from himself.
Well, technically, right, I mean, if it's a separate piece of property, technically he would have to, yes.
Yeah.
We were originally talking about it, some additional sit back and this is all where...
Yes, yeah, it's, originally it was showing, I think, to be about seventy, eighty feet off the road, now it's a good couple hundred off the road, so yeah, that, that takes that into account.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. All of us, a motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Dollar General.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This next site plan is the Dollar General, this is on Highway ninety-nine at the corner Clear Ridge. Again, the first page shows the existing conditions and the second page is where the full-blown site plan will be. Of course, there's also drainage and everything else planned on this. As you recall, this did go through the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners as well for rezoning for this, as well as, you can see on the, on the lot number two there, eventually they, they show a Phase Two for probably like a gas station, convenience market type establishment. Now, right at this point, right now, that's not part of, it's just the Dollar General and associated retail spaces. As far as the, the site plan itself, of course, we did have a number of comments that needed to be addressed and we did submit those to the applicant's engineer. The applicant's engineer actually has had a sit-down meeting, there were a lot of questions about the drainage on this site, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill to speak about that to a little more extent.
We, the original drainage plan that came in on this, we, we didn't like it very good, so we got him to, had some suggestions and asked him to look at some things, and what they've submitted, we are comfortable with.
One other item I will bring up that I, that I was gonna mention, part of the requirements for this rezoning conditional use was for the turn lane along Highway ninety-nine to access the property, and as you can see also to access Clear Ridge Drive. You can see that they do show it on the site plan. We have met with the applicant's engineer regarding that. They've had meetings with TDOT and it's very likely that TDOT's gonna request them to bond this improvement, the turn lane, as opposed to building it at this point because of the future widening of Highway ninety-nine, so that's coming right from, from TDOT. So we told them, as long as we have documentation that TDOT's asking them and requiring them to go ahead and bond that, that, staff, we'd be, we'd be okay with that, but I wanted to bring that to your attention.
So that is, that is a request from the state of Tennessee?
That's a request from TDOT, yes, sir.
Okay. And they can send us documentation of that?
Yes.
'Cause I know, I know the line of this came up, there was a lot of discussion on the, from the public end, from the Planning Commission members about the, the turn lane, so that will help if they can provide the documentation from TDOT.
What kind of timeframe for that widening takes place in this area?
Jamie, wanna?
Within, within two years, but that was a few months ago, we did that, the plans, and we met with Senator Tracy and all of, several of his TDOT commissioner and everybody at that, that, they recommended that we post the bond and not build it at this point due to the timing of them coming through there and building the turn lane.
If they're gonna tear it up, if they're gonna tear it up in eighteen months, it doesn't make much sense to put it in today.
That's right.
As long as they don't do go ahead and get it put in in a timely manner, you know.
If that, if that doesn't, say in, in two years, if it doesn't...
They have a bond, they are, they'll have a bond posted with TDOT.
Okay.
What, what happens is we'll, we'll send an entrance permit to the state with Dollar General, once this is approved, and then they'll come back and say, okay, it's a bond amount for X amount of dollars. The owner of the land will post the bond for that turn lane, so in two years, if it doesn't get built, they'll call the bond and have them build the turn lane. But at this point, TDOT wants them to hold off and, 'cause they're fixing them.
Right.
Build, you know, install the...
Well, like, like Will said, if they're gonna do it in eighteen months, you know, since...
Yeah, they're gonna tear, tear up what they put in, any, yeah.
Okay. My next question is, it may be, Jamie, you might be able to answer this for Eric one. We were just talking, at one time, right here, was there a drainage pond or something right here in front of where the entrance is gonna be the Dollar General?
There, there is, and if you look at the, at the intersection, Clear Ridge Drive, you can see it on dashed on the, well, even on the preliminary, the site plan on sheet two, you can see for Lot Two, they've got their own pond also, is that what you're talking about?
We moved it away from the road, wasn't it there originally down in front of the...
Is that the one on Black Castle Pond? The one over there had one out on the road.
Yeah, this, this one, this one's always been here.
Eric, is that what you didn't want about it?
Well, one thing to remember also, the one on the corner is a completely different watershed than the Dollar General.
Yeah.
There's two different, there's a hill in the middle of this property, and so everything to the, just to the south of, like, the corner where the gas station would be, it's totally different water. But as far as on this side, nothing's changed, as far, I don't, I don't recall a pond being up front.
Mm-mm. It's always been on the side of you.
For some reason, I do, too, for some reason. But, but as far as the, the drainage, so like over here on Mr. Womack and, and other neighbors back here in the back, and stuff, I know that this holds water quite a bit right here, right now.
What, what they, what they've submitted, and like I said, we, we like this, this pond in the back, if you turn to page, page three, sheet three, it shows up a pond at the back corner.
We've, we've got wronged in Dollar General, we're talking about...
That's what I said on my last... Had the pond in the road.
Gary, I think what you've alluded to, though, Eric's making a real good point, we're, we're gonna try to coordinate this with TDOT, but one of the main reasons that Mr. Womack's property ponds there is because the, the two adjacent properties, it's actually a foot and a half lower, his little area that you see that fills up with water when it rains a bunch, it's a foot and a half lower than the thirty-six inch culvert out there at the road that drains it. We're gonna try to coordinate some of this with the turn lane.
Okay.
At the time, but hopefully when they do that, they'll cut that down where some of that ponding will, will lower.
So this is gonna take care of some, some drainage issues?
Yes, so we're actually digging out some more volume in the pond, so it'll actually have more storage capacity for that area, not just putting a pond in there and making preimposed, but digging out an extra volume.
We, we looked at the volume even next door, and so that this, this pond that they're digging, I mean, it's, they're just gonna take it offsite, so that's just gonna give more, that water that's on Mr. Womack is just gonna give it somewhere else to go, down.
So like I say, it's gonna have some other drainage issues out there as well.
Yeah.
We're hoping when TDOT comes through with the road, that they're gonna look at this and, and we'll, we'll try to stay ahead of the situation and work with them to make sure that their new drainage, their pipes aren't sticking up four feet out of the ground, but, but as, as things are right now, it should help.
Okay.
What about the access road to Clear Ridge, is that gonna get built with the Dollar General? Or is that gonna get held off until Lot Two develops?
No, it's gonna get built with the Dollar General.
So we'll go ahead and build the full width of the entrance and everything?
Yes, sir.
And, and that way, then you just come back and put a building on Lot Two whenever that comes to pass.
Correct.
So it'll be, I didn't wanna not have that access.
No, we'll have the full, the full access through there.
That was one of my questions, but, so this, one entrance and exit right here off of ninety-nine, that's by our plan, what we're talking about.
Correct, yes, sir.
Right, that'll be a shared access.
Shared access.
Okay. And then the bonding thing for the turn lane, then what's, what your, I mean, that was a real heated part of the discussion.
Yeah, that, that's just for the turn lane on the Highway ninety-nine.
Right.
That, we've met with TDOT a few months ago, I don't, a couple of months ago, and they recommended that we do the design, submit it to them, and they'll post a letter for us to bond it. They don't want this built at this time, because of the timing issue of them installing a brand new road. They're working on design plans as we speak right now for this.
What did they say, their...
Senator Tracy, based on the economic situation, they're shooting for within, you know, eighteen months to, to two years, this to be...
Of starting.
Of starting, you're correct.
Well, I know the concerns of a, a lot of those folks back behind here, as well as, well, I think a, a planning member that was on the, on the Planning Commission here, this, the big deal was this, how quick, I guess, Two was gonna be built out?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And then what was coming over, at, at that time, we didn't know it was Dollar General, I think, so.
Yeah.
I think they were more stressing up on this convenience store being here first, but now it's gonna be second.
That's right.
So you're still talking about a lot of traffic right here and, you know, that, the timing on that is, I think, very crucial to this project.
Yeah. So hopefully...
Well, I'll be honest with timing, I mean, that's, out there in my county commission district, timing of, timing of widening ninety-nine and all this stuff is, is very crucial, too, 'cause I hear where the Rockville Middle School and the Rockville Elementary School is, in the mornings and in the afternoons, it's...
Yeah, it's backed up.
It's backed up quite a bit, and it's just, you know, it is, the turn lane is needed, but I can also understand the state side of it as far as, you know...
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, the traffic's still gonna keep back, regardless of turn lanes there, the traffic's gonna keep getting backed up 'cause of school, you know, the turn lane's not gonna help that, but it'll help the situation as far as them coming in there during peak periods during the day.
But you're talking about two years before starting the project.
No, 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 they're, they're saying this thing's gonna start within, within the next eighteen months to two years, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
But they don't want this to be, you know, they're designing this now, and then we're gonna go out here and throw a turn lane. We gotta send it to them to see if they'll let us even do it in the first place. What they said is they're gonna make us post a bond on it. We'll post a bond just in case for some reason, let's say, two years go by and they say, well, it's gonna be another year, then, you know, y'all could call and say, okay, this needs to be placed in, we're not, it's taking longer than two years, it's gonna be three or four years, then we want this turn lane put in here. When this, let's say this gas station comes in, a year from now or something like that.
Doug, can, can we, can we put a timeframe on the, on the, on the bond?
Yeah, I think it'd be kinda difficult, since it's TDOT that's asking for it, I mean, I don't know if we can really condition TDOT to do something. I mean, I, what I can say is as staff, we can monitor it, and if it's looking like that the project's gonna be pushed off a couple more years, further than what we think, we can come back and say...
The reason I ask that question is because without TDOT's approval...
This doesn't happen.
Yeah, it doesn't happen anywhere.
Right. I mean, TDOT could just come back and say, well, fine, we're just not gonna allow them to build the turn lane and that's that, you know, then, you know, that, there's really not much we can do about that.
The motion was, if allowed, anyway.
That, that's correct.
If allowed, that's right, right.
If TDOT does not allow it, we've already approved it, we're just looking at the site plan.
Right.
Right.
Jamie or Doug gave the one, what are, what's their plans for the road? Four lanes and a suicide lane?
Five lane, yeah. Five lane, center turn lane, four lanes.
It'll be there anyway if they follow through on what they're doing.
Correct, right.
It'll help the whole situation out there, once they get that installed.
Well, I think, in, during that process, I think the intent was on the turn lane to help, help the public out there as well, make it safe, and I, you know, if the state's not gonna let us, if they want it done and they're not gonna give approval to it, and this is the best case scenario that we can get to help public safety out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion. Motion to approve it.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion to approve, all of us, a motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Loves Travel Stop.
Yes, thank you. Actually, no, you're, the first page is fine, first page is fine. This is a site plan for the Loves Travel Stop over off of the Epsom Hill Road, Buchanan exit off I twenty-four. This plan was actually submitted, I believe, back in May. We did our comments and submitted our comments to them. We actually had it on the agenda, but the, the engineer at the time hadn't done the, the revisions that needed to be made, so he did just ask for it to be deferred for a little while. The reason being was that Loves apparently is doing a lot of these facilities, or these, these small additions across the country, and they had them kind of prioritize, and this one was just a little further down the list. Basically, what you're seeing is in the, in the parking area, kinda toward the, as you're looking at the page, kind of in the middle of the page, they're just asking for a, a small addition to be made there for, uh, storage of tire, maintenance, that kinda thing, to, to go along with the existing Loves Travel Stop. As far as staff is concerned, this met our, our criteria, there were a number of, of conditions and, and things that we had in there that needed to be changed, revisions that needed to be made originally. They've made all the material ones, there are a few things that still need to be done, most notably in the certificates. We had emailed them the wording of all the certificates. They've, for the most part, have, they, they put on there what needs to be on there, but there, for example, this is on sewer, so they don't need the subsurface sewage disposal certificate. Also, they just need to go ahead into the certificates and put actually on there what the site plan name is, who the water provider is, that, that kind of information in the parentheses. Also, the flood information that they were using was just an older map, I don't foresee that affecting anything, but they just need to make sure that they have the most up-to-date map on here. As far as material things, those have been all taken care of, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions?
Pretty much all they're doing is adding maintenance building.
Pretty much.
To the existing facility, so some of the concerns that you have, we can pass it contingent upon them.
Yes, yeah, those are things that I won't, I won't sign off on the building permit until they're done anyway, so.
So with the maintenance building, are they gonna be working on these trucks?
It's gonna be mostly like tires and things like that, so nothing, it's not gonna be like heavy-duty maintenance parts lying around or anything like that. I'm not sure, is there, is there a representative here? I'm not sure, is there, is there a representative here? No, there's not, okay.
Okay, have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Bylaws amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We'd emailed out last week, early last week, I think it was last Monday, as a matter of fact, our intent to bring to you possible amendment to the Planning Commission bylaws, the deferral policy. Essentially, the reason we're bringing this to your attention is, we have a couple of applications, and the ability to have, the potential to have more, if this isn't passed, where they've submitted for their original Planning Commission meeting, however, they've never actually been considered, they just keep asking to be put off, be put off, and be put off, and put off. There's one that we have right now, that's probably approaching about a year, I would say, that we still haven't brought it forward per the applicant's request, it's just kind of pending, often, you know, pending land, so to speak. So basically, what we're asking to do is to, we were asking that a deferral policy be put into the, the bylaws, and the wording you have here before you is a little different than what we emailed you, but basically what it says is that, you know, it's a policy of the commission, that any request to defer, the consideration of a rezoning or conditional use permit application be submitted to the planning director in writing prior to the meeting. If it's, you know, after we receive that, then the notices of a deferral, if we have time, would be sent out, as well as the next public hearing date, be mailed to those who would originally have received public hearing notice to begin with. We're also requiring that, if they do request a deferral, that the applicant is charged with the cost of preparing and mailing new notices, basically postage. For some of the smaller ones, it's not a big deal, but we have a couple of large ones that are here that, you know, we will be spending seventy, eighty dollars in postage, so if they're gonna ask for a deferral, we're, we're just gonna require them to recoup that cost for us. And we're asking for a three-month period to be placed on that. Basically, anytime they'd have, if they want to, if they came to, like, to say, this next meeting in October, and they ask for it to be deferred, they would have the November meeting, the December meeting, and then the January meeting. After that, if they still didn't come back, the application would be, would be considered defaulted, I guess, and from that point, they'd have to resubmit, and any fees associated